We have, the month of February is actually CTE month. And we're members will be sharing with us a little bit about what's taking place at Deland as it pertains to CTE. With us, we have our very own principal, Mr. Dizarolmo, who by the way is doing a phenomenal, phenomenal job there at Deland. Dr. James Lowenstein, he's an educator at Deland High School, the CTE for the CTE department and the chair. And Mrs. Melissa London, who is a facilitator for CTE right there also at Deland. So, thank you for being here this evening and for willing to share your, what are some of the great things that are happening at Deland High School as it pertains to CTE?
Well, good afternoon Chairman Haynes, Board Members. Dr. Balgivan, thank you for inviting us here today. Bring your greetings from Deland High School. I'm the proud principal, Michael Dizarolmo. I do have Ms. Lindell and Mr. Lowenstein here with me today. They're part of our instructional team with the Career and Tech Ed program at Deland High School. We want to thank you first of all for allowing us to come here and show you all the great things we have going on at Deland High. You know, we're a school very rich in tradition. We are the largest school in the county. We'll be celebrating our 106th commencement ceremony this spring, so we're looking forward to that. We brought some student guests this afternoon with us that are going to be speaking about their experiences in the program and give you some reflection on their perspective of what they see in our instructional model. We have nine CTE programs that are anchored by our two academies. And we have 17 amazing instructors that work in those programs with over 300 years of experience combined. And they are always, always there every day working with our students. So, we're very excited to show you what we have.
Hi, I'm Melissa Lindell. I think it's time to cue up the video.
I'm Maddie, back with a special school board episode of The Bark. Did you know Deland High has the best CTE programs in the district? Let's take a look. First up, our national level agricultural program. Now let's see what construction and carpentry are up to. Next up, our early childhood education. Now let's take a look at our medical program. Bulldogs have their finger on the pulse of the future. Now let's see what culinary is cooking up. Now let's check out our marketing. It's now time to look at our awesome academies. First up, the Engineering Academy. And now my personal favorite, Communications Academy. That's all we have for you for this show. Make sure to follow us on Instagram at the.bark.dhs to keep up with all our latest achievements. Have a great weekend and go Bulldogs!
I do have to mention before you guys speak, actually that video, you've got competition, Mr. Gomez. That video was created by, by the students there at Deland. They did an amazing job.
Hey, great job. Great job.
Did you guys notice the two dozen eggs on the table? That's a big deal these days. Just saying. I don't smell any cookies, so.
We have cookies. Powerful.
So this presentation aligns with the following goals as part of Volusia County Schools 2023 Strategic Plan. I don't want to just read to y'all, but goal number one.
We align with the five strategic goals.
Okay, so as Mr. D said when he introduced us, so we're a VCS leader in career tech education with nine CTE programs. Oh, sorry. It's okay, no, not a bother. We offer fifty, over fifty CTE class offerings and two career academies. We have seventeen CTE instructors with over 300 years of combined teaching experience.
So the Communication Academy actually put on that Bark episode and they do it quite often, they'll send out to the faculty and staff and so they, they do it about a couple times. Yeah, about every two weeks, they send out a new one. And the students, of course, produce it, write it, and they take care of everything. Coach Lowe just kind of sits back and oversees it all. So the programs we offer, as you can see, those are the nine CTE programs. We brought student guests with some instructors and they're going to go through each one as we go down. Our agriculture is one of our big ones that's nationally recognized. And of course, a few of our others in our engineering program as well. Our two career academies, like we said, are the Communications Academy and our Engineering Academy.
Without reading off of the screen, the Communications Academy combines primarily, all of the kids are in the digital multimedia class, which teaches Photoshop, Illustrator, InDesign, sometimes Dreamweaver. Those are all industry certifications in Adobe products. And then they choose between journalism or television production. I'm the television production teacher. The journalism class is under the English department, but we include it because it's relevant to the academy. The TV production, we certify kids in Adobe Premiere and After Effects. We try to get the kids out into the industry to, you saw the pictures from Channel Six. We've taken kids to the news journal, down into the printing room to see the stuff that they do there. We are also a high school partner with Full Sail University, which students who complete our program are eligible for $15,000 scholarship because they have come through and we're one of 50 schools in the program worldwide. There's a few in Florida, but 48 in the United States. And we're one of those programs, they evaluated our program and the things that we offer and decided we were worthy of being included in that. We have, we're in the works now where we're going to take our kids down to their campus, shoot on their back lot. And we'll have the DSLR cameras with us also. They'll bring that stuff back to the school where my students will create movie trailers from the back lot and Ms. Perry's digital multimedia classes will create movie posters. So that's one of the ways that we're incorporating with them. We also have, in the past, have done immersions. We're getting back into that coming out of the pandemic. We've had kids work with, actually, I had two girls working with the Digital Communications Group, which was a company here in Deland before the pandemic. And they were so good that she ended up hiring them. And they were getting paid while they were in high school for what we thought they would be doing for free.
Awesome. You saw her on The Bark, she's here, Maddie Jackson. So she's going to come up and talk a little bit about the Communications Academy.
I'm Madeline Jackson. You may know me from the video that you just got to watch. And I'm here to talk about the Communications Academy. This academy is held up by a solid three teachers, may I say, great teachers. Ms. Perry, who runs our digital multimedia classes. Ms. Sniffin, who runs our journalism classes. And Mr. Lowe, who runs our digital video tech classes. The Communications Academy is in charge of, like he just said, our new show, which is The Bark, which comes out bi-weekly. We all do our part. We make our stories and, and write the stories and keep up with the school's events to make sure that we are relevant and letting the kids know what upcoming events are happening. We're also in charge of the newspaper, The Growler. And while we are doing this, we are also trying to get certified in Adobe certifications constantly. So that's a great thing. I know that I want to pursue communications as a career. So it is such an opportunity to be able to work with these people that I love, doing what I love in the academy. And I'm saying that I'm truly grateful being able to be given this opportunity to work with these people. Thank you for your time.
So we also boast our Engineering Academy. Of course, it emphasizes the math science, computer components that you see in the engineering field. We do have another student guest that would like to speak. Hannah?
I'm Hannah.
Hannah Adley, I'm sorry. Calvin Laundrie is going to speak.
Hello, I am not Hannah. I am, I'm part of the Engineering Academy at Deland High School, joined in my freshman year, and I really enjoy the academy. It's a great experience. First of all, we've got two great teachers, Mr. Pollock and Mr. Folsom are just exceptional. And they really help lead us through the design process. The people in the program learn in the first year and second year, they learn to get certified in different programs, the complete design process from start to finish. And it's a very, very inclusive program. It's very involved. We do a lot of hands-on work and it's just a really great experience. I've been certified in a few different online programs, a few CAD softwares. It's, it's awesome. I just can't, I just can't represent it enough, really. Yeah, thank you for your time.
Our big one, Ag, Mr. Brander, most of you know. He's, Mackenzie Cunningham is, she's upset with me, but she's, she's here for the.
Good evening, Dr. Balgivan, school board members and guests. My name is Mackenzie Cunningham and I am the current president of the Deland Senior FFA. So our agriculture program consists of four different class opportunities. We have Agriculture Foundations, which is an honors level science course. Animal Science II and III and IV. Agricultural Mechanics II, III and IV, which primarily focuses around metalworking and welding, as well as Agriculture Business, which is an honors level economics course. Our teachers are Mr. Peck and Mr. Bradner. And we have very, we have quite a bit of outside the classroom experiences, such as our mechanics lab and our 27-acre school farm. Now, our program is probably one of the most successful agricultural programs in Volusia County. We have so many successes and outside of what we are known for, which is our livestock evaluation and our poultry judging, stuff like that, we have teams that have completed 19 state championship titles in things such as horse evaluation, livestock judging, poultry evaluation, environmental science, agricultural mechanics, agricultural education, career events, and I have most been recently named the champion for the state discussion meet. Now, recently, our parliamentary procedure team has just advanced to the district contest, as well as our prepared public speaking team, our tractor driving, and our discussion meet nominees. All of them were competing for the district title on January 31st. And we welcome any and all visits to our chapter as we cannot describe how important this is in the short time that we have here today. And on behalf of the Deland Senior FFA chapter and its program, I would like to present this jacket to Dr. Balgivan.
Thank you. Wow. I love it. I'll be wearing this at the next school board, maybe after break. We're so glad that you enjoy it. Thank you.
That's great. Another one of our programs is our Carpentry and Construction Program. You've seen in the video, they actually make the signs that you see on the beaches and they make the lifeguard towers. I got Brandon Wheeler, he's going to speak to y'all today about.
I'm a sophomore who attends Deland High School. Today I'll be talking about a little more into the instruction program in Deland High School. The construction program consists of several things. One of the big things is you're able to receive your HBI certification, which if you progress into any further job that consists of anything like that, it helps to get the job. He teaches, our teacher is Mr. Hamilton. He is a very good teacher. He uses his out-of-school time, breaks, weekends, and gives us a chance to learn more into the club. We've done several things. Two of the biggest projects we've done this year is we've done floats for the homecoming and Christmas parade. And we've used like our break time to build it. And the club is very inclusive to all. Anyone can be in it and builds a lot of teamwork and friendship among each other. Gives a lot of teamwork and building and you also get a lot of problem-solving abilities. Things do go wrong when building in projects and it allows you to think quickly and come up with solutions for the projects. And it's, the teaching is you, there's several aspects to it. He does electrical work. You get to learn wiring and stuff. There's a lot of hands-on carpentry. One of his biggest projects he does is picnic benches. And he does chicken coops, dog houses, a lot of assembling type things. And you get a lot of hands-on experience with, with tools and machinery, which is good for real-world experiences for, you know, especially homeowners and anybody who's planning on to do anything. You need a somewhat common basic skill in things. And you get a chance to learn and use tools. And you learn safe ways to use the tools and way more effective ways to use tools. And without the program, you know, current and future generations of students would really miss out on a lot of experience. Because without the things, you know, I've, I've seen kids in the program who, when coming into it had no experience, they couldn't even drive a nail into a piece of wood. And coming out of it, they were able to run stalls and operate machinery that are way more complex and way more, bigger, I guess. That concludes it. Thank you for your time.
So we also have early childhood, where they actually work with the young ones. I go in there a lot when I'm having a rough day. It's nice to hang out with them. She sees me in there a lot.
Hello, I'm Natalie Cantley and I'm in the Early Childhood Education Program. And I have been in this program for the last four years. In our student-led preschool program, it allows me to work hands-on with children in our community, including teacher kids and high school families. Throughout the program, as a student teacher, we have the opportunity to work in rotations, learning more about children through theory work, making bulletin boards, scrapbooks, and lesson plans, and then learning, then teaching our bull pups. As a Level Four in the program, by the time I graduate, I would have earned my CDA, Child Development Associate's Degree, and be able to teach at a preschool. Because of this program, it has encouraged me to go to UNF and get my early childhood degree so I can come back to Volusia County and become a kindergarten teacher.
We'll have a contract waiting for you.
And now we have some friends from our bull pup program who would like to share their experience.
This is Ellen.
Say it.
Hello.
There you go.
Hello.
All right.
We're going to see all.
We have Macy Coward here to speak a little bit about that.
Hello, my name's Macy Coward. I'm president of our club that's a part of their medical program. It's called HOSA. I'm just going to share a few things that we do. So we start out, we have two teachers that organize it. It's Ms. Hunt and Ms. Ashford. We start out our freshman year in medical skills and by our sophomore year, we do anatomy and physiology. And then our junior year, we are in medical foundations. And our senior year, we become the EMR, oh my gosh, I'm in my senior year. It's our EMR class and I leave with my, if I pass the test and everything by the end of the year, we leave with our EKG Technician Certification. So some things that we do, it's, our program is like 80% hands-on. Your freshman year, you get to do, you get to become CPR certified. You learn vital signs. You do splints and things like that. Our sophomore and junior year, it's a little bit more in the books. You just kind of are starting to memorize things about the body, things like that. And then our senior year, we do way more hands-on. My favorite thing that we've done is suturing. It's helping me become what I want to be because I'm going into surgical when I get out of high school. Some other things that we do is subaneous shots. We, by the end of the year, our last final exam, we go up to Daytona State College and deliver robotic babies. We also have a volunteer program. So I'm a volunteer at Advent Health. And we do a bunch of things. Our field trip, we just toured the Advent Health and got to see all the floors and things like that. And we also, I run the blood drives at our school, so the, all of HOSA gets to help out with things like that. So it's very fun. And we just do a lot to help the community. But it's a fun program, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And so young lady at Advent Health, you have a job when you graduate, okay? Tell them I sent you.
Our culinary program, we have three teachers that run that, Mr. Monaco, Ms. Smith, and, oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're right.
Oh, and Neil Link is going to come up and speak a little bit.
Good afternoon. My name is Neil Link. I am here to represent culinary from Deland High School. Culinary is run by two teachers, Mrs. Smith and Mr. Monaco. Both do wonderful at their jobs on teaching us on how to learn and how to grow as individuals. There's two huge parts of culinary, I would say I would split it up on, is learning and the labor of it. So within our freshman and sophomore year, we are very forced, not forced, I would say, but like very hands-on on learning Surf Safe and National Registry. Those are two things we have as certificates that we have taken in culinary. It's game-changing, in my opinion. Having those and just being able to get a job, especially as a teenager, trying to get a job nowadays, having your Surf Safe and National Registry, it does wonders, especially in the culinary field. So we spend a majority of our time learning food safety, how to handle it properly, and just how to take care of food in general and how to cut correctly, how to do stuff. And then the second half of it is labor. We spend a lot of our times in the kitchen, cooking and cleaning. We learned a lot of team skills within culinary. We always work as a group. It's always a group effort. You have to communicate with one another and I enjoy that so much. We learn on a bunch of hands-on things and it's fun. I usually spend my mornings in culinary as that is, I am a teacher aide for culinary first period. I spend probably my first period making over 200 cookies every morning and I enjoy it. Culinary has helped me find a passion I have loved and I think I will carry it out and I hope it could also carry out other people's passions. Thank you.
And last but not least, we have our, our marketing. That's ran by Ms. Blanchard. And we have a guest today, Zariah.
Hello, my name is Zariah Baugh. And I'd like to start with the levels of the marketing class. The level one is the course called Business Ownership. Level two is Marketing Essentials. Level three is Marketing Applications. And year four is Marketing Management, and I actually have that class. So, in this class, you learn a lot about like management and in a way, I'd like to say like leadership and, you know, how to handle money and, you know, being successful like within the management business. I believe that this will be helpful to me even when I start first working because it is a business course. And it gives me an advantage over other job applicants. I can also use this information and the skills I learned in my career and I want to move up. to move up in a company and take on more responsibilities and earn more money. Another thing I'd like to add is that we, there's a club called Fashion Plates, right here. And with that, I really love how we can do fashion shows, interact with one another, learn, like, confidence and how to get out of your shell, and, like, clothing, and then, um, like, also going back to leadership, you learn that role. And, you know, doing the unexpected and, like, taking things head-on, and... Thank you.
So that's highlighted our CTE programs in our, in our academies. Um, Ms. Lundell did put together some gift bags for you. Um, we'll get those arranged with Mr. Gomez. There are cookies in there, so they're merry-... He didn't want to provide you with some Deland gear, um, and we appreciate your time today, allowing us to present our programs.
Thank you. The principal, Dejero Romo, your team, two, Zariah, Monica, Mackenzie, Macy, Madison, Kevin, Brandon, and Natalie. Come on up so we can take a pic with you, please. You guys are, it just reminds us why we do what we do, each and every day.
Where is, um, Cory? Cory?
Anytime you want to come visit, send me an email.
I will. I got it, thank you.
That was, how long is this thing? Actually, I'll, I'll send you an email, Mr. Conges, for you to read it next week.
I would like that, yeah.
We do realize that it is six oh four. And so I apologize to those of you that were here to speak, starting at six, but we needed to go ahead and finish up, um, the student presentation. I've been asked if we could have just a few moments to have a restroom break, and then we will start public input, and I will take all. I currently have in my possession nine cards, and we will allow all nine people to speak, if you will give us just a few moments. So we will reconvene back in here at six ten for public input. Thank you. All right. If everyone can have a seat, we're going to begin. Do you have any more cards, Mr. Gomez? Okay. So, um, I was handed more cards, there's actually eighteen. We're going to split it in half, and we're going to do nine at this time, and then we will do nine at the later time. So I'm going to state who the first and second individuals are, so that the second individual is ready to start as soon as the first individual's, um, is finished. Elizabeth Albert will be first, followed by Jason Height, second. Welcome, Ms. Albert.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Balgobin, and members of the audience. So there have been so many wonderful things happening recently, um, so many great events occurring, such as the Teacher of the Year event, uh, where we're recognizing the very best of the best. And I noticed that there were many comments made about the appreciation and valuing of our teachers, yet my concern is that the actions of the district do not always align with those statements. Um, it seems as if you have eyes that can see the struggle, you have ears that can hear the concerns, yet your hearts have possibly become hardened to the needs of the people. And although, uh, the separation numbers were not included in tonight's HR update when we get there, uh, what we'd like you to realize is that retention must be your priority. Uh, we ask that you reflect upon the reality that the numbers on those pages actually equal real people. And in the words of Dr. Teresa Ward, "You need to humanize the educational professionals who work with our children." After all, they're leaving you. And so that we ask, we ask that tonight, you hear their names. Victoria Bassow, Alyssa Berkeley, Erin Cotney, Kylie Cozad, Wendy Doofit, Amy Drummond, Haley Fisher, Mary Gorilic, Kelly Hermendorfer, Cody Holland, Daniel Johnson, Allison Jones, Julie Jones, Brandon Lee, Lauren Lowman, Amy McLean, Elizabeth Morgan, Joan Plavchan, Christina Secunda, Devin Shines, Brittany Snyder, Melanie Southern, Mitzi Stevenson, Samuel Story, Joseph Thomas, Holly Mitchell, Cindy Whitehead, Anissa Abston, Terry Abston, Brooke Anderson, Joy Bigum, Jeffrey Brown, Bethany DeSills, Erica Demke, Savannah Ebbey, Brittany Feinberg, Richard Philippi, Tiffany Fowler, Deborah Gatz, Haven Gill, Jessica Granahan, Joseph Groth, Jaclyn Hodson, Jennifer Jenkins, James Johnson Jr., Melinda Jones, Donna Kunkel, Elizabeth Mackenzie, Marietta Moret, Christina Payler, Elizabeth Pierce, Kristen Perkins, Andrew Redd, Susan Sandman, Stephanie Sharp, Misty Schillings, Melanie Shotten, Paul Spiegel, Christopher Stevenson, Nancy Swerigen, Elaine Tolvo, Rebecca Tomes, Magda Cologne, Jay Triplet, Kayla Vargas, Michelle Youngblood. Thank you.
Thank you. After, Jason will be Mary D. Padova.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Balgobin, my name's Jason Height, live in Port Orange, teach at Heritage Middle School. I'm very disappointed to be here tonight, and continuing with the list of names, you need to hear their voices. Uh, Mary Denning, Darren Gentry, Jaleen Grover, Clay Born Parker, went to high school with Clay, uh, Randy Reed, Patricia Seller, Stephanie Warmoth, Alicia Scott, Carrie Guy, Brandon Tweedy, Jefferson Lemon, Niyara Hines, Ariana Martinez, Carrie Kolowski, Michael Jackson, Matthew Johnson, Frechala Ali Bahali, Nicole Mayenza, Vicky Fritz, Jennifer Gibson, Wayne Small, Stephanie Smiley, Elizabeth Conquest, Robin Davis, Kay Floria, Alexander Notting, Nottenstein, Kathy Kelly, Mary Loth, Gabriella Mastriacola. Gave me all the hard names, by the way. Ramos Peralta, Consuelo Rockenwald, Braden Thompson, Jaleen Tucker, Oliver Vandergriff, Diana Henry, Jill Pionoski, Eileen Fenwick, Mackenzie Griffith, Mentara Johnson, she was our ISS teacher, she was really good, Kelly Rossi, Al Thor, Timothy Smith, Amelia Malam, Bradley McFarland, so many names, Franklin Bossavier, Brenda Chappelle, Jennifer Cherry, Deanna Cox, Katie Donovan, Na'ime Egelstein, Christina Kelleher, John C. Kelly, Mary Liddy, Janelle, Catherine Miles, Andre John Magdalavaski, Yasmin Manub, Sidney Murphy, Sable Nahim, David Pacey, Angela Price, Bridget Pullman, Maureen Rodinsky, Christina Ryder, Sanaris E. Sambria, Danielle Sevchik, intensive reading teacher from my school, she was a big loss, Joni Short, Miguel Soto, La Sweeney, Griswell Torres, Judith Velasquez Medina, Sasha Brutus, Gritier Navara, William Wise, Aaron Martinez, Nicholas Savinsky, Emily Weiss, Brianna Scott, Lori Gregson, Joseph Landerville, Alyssa Mompoint, Edward Baldoff, Elizabeth Torres, Mark Richardson, Kristy Casey, Heather Hotty, Carrie Archiberg, Nakira Anderson, Sandra Arroya, Christopher Billingham, Franklin Cremia, Alex Garcia, Jacob Hyde, Gloria Mendoza, Susanna Malani, Teresa Nos, and my time is up.
Thank you. Following Mary D. Padova will be Holly Azakure.
Good evening, board, Superintendent Mary D. Padova from, I live in Deland. Um, and I would like you to hear some more names. Francisco Aramas, Janelle Wodachika, Uyes Semper, David Smithson, Danny Stein, Courtney Voss, Brittany Shard, Alicia O'Neil, Megan Alitzer, Ryan Barbaro, Tanya Caffery, Lynell Cooper, Byron Goss, Chanel Hairston, Elliot Kachmiz, Melanie Castrey, Alicia Marin, Lorraine McLaughlin, Laura Raham, Adam Rosenberg, Kimberly Sanders, Melissa Smith, Scott Smith, Sherry Maddle, Hannah Stratter, Melissa Williamson, Alabair, Courtney Botzford, Brandon Bristow... Francisco Aramas, Janelle Wodachika, Uyes Semper, David Smithson, Danny Stein, Courtney Voss, Brittany Shard, Alicia O'Neil, Megan Alitzer, Ryan Barbaro, Tanya Caffery, Lynell Cooper, Byron Goss, Chanel Hairston, Elliot Kachmiz, Melanie Castri, Alicia Marin, Lorraine McLaughlin, Laura Raham, Adam Rosenberg, Kimberly Sanders, Melissa Smith, Scott Smith, Sherri Maddle, Hannah Stratter, Melissa Williamson, Halla Bear, Courtney Botzford, Brandon Bristow, Carly Bryan, William Campbell, Angela Cogley, Dina Compon, Lynn Correa, Diana Cox, Thomas Davidson, Sidney Gragg, Erin Glory, Anna Herman, Herman Inglow, James Hyder, Elaine Johnson, Helen Kaya, Kira Kearsley, Julie Kinison, Armand LaCroix, Melissa Ludecki, Heather Myers, Barbara Neely, Jody Walters, Bernice Rivera, Amy Rosner, Crystal Shepherd, Felkas Silva, Melissa Smith, Miranda Solms, Jordan Spencer, Brandy Tuwamak, Carol Wicks, Teresa Wiley, Patria Alcantara, Cristonia Adudu, Sean Pietraria Adudu, Mary Albert, Kimberly Beckley, Donna Bent, Daniel Bosma, Soraya Burke, Dana Byrd, Andrea Cochran, Neil Cologne, Linda Evans, Terrence Gatling, Jonathan Galt, Audrey Goropenshuk, Shereen Grease, Lauren Griffin, Diamond Hampton, Batista Lauer, Nora Leon Denunis. Thank you.
Following Holly will be Kristen Kinsella.
Good evening. I'm Holly Azucar. Hear their names. Jorge Azucar, David Manning, Courtney Maxwell, Gwen Peterson, Ashley Ray, Brian Modesto, Samantha Rupp, Courtney Sawyer, Julie Schuman Garrettton, Clarice Spagnuello, Tiffany Sutta, Felicia Taylor, Edwenna Timson, Janet Walker, Megan Wilmot, Michelle Zirkelbach, Jaclyn Zook, Jaclyn Shiver, Adeline Rodriguez, Anna Marie Corgan, Catrice Julian, Carrie Milligan, Anna Hack, Chester Pyatt, Joseph Adam Sigmeister, Latonya Baker, Frederick Brown, Sheila Harlecker, Jennifer Moore, Linda Schultz, Elizabeth Sebastianelli, Gina Silvestri, Elizabeth Wesley, Christopher Green, Shania Allen, McCarylyn Velasquez, Morgan Berry, Victoria Centron, Marie Delahantney, Nancy Denard, Christina Duberry, Teresa Flaherty, Nicholas Frybarger, Desiree Gilmore, Sonia Guerrero, Dara Hill, Nathan Carson, Carolyn Locurto, Diana Nieto, Diadra Rosenberg, Courtney Rumbot Kirk, Demara Silva, Karen Swintek, Deborah Thumann, Catherine Tran, Myra White, Emily Brannon, Sierra Bryant, Kelly Brode, Autumn Colbert, Nancy Denza, Marina Diet, Michaela Hall, Susan Jones, Dixie Legareta Perez, Christine Raymond, Denise Rivera, Toni Rogers, Darcy Umstead, Cheyenne Williams, Karen Kaiser, Rosario Perez, Jennifer Still, Sandy Skilern, Carissa Oronda, Delana Bellatonio, Deborah Cope, Jaclyn Richards, Rhonda Crumley, Elizabeth Osborne, Anne Flynn, Sandra Castro, Melena DeCastro, Jill Pritt O'Brien, Narita Mormon, Wendy Lautis, Cynthia Dickinson, Patricia Bowling, Jose Santiago Negron, Catherine Melendez, Milton Gonzalez, and Jose Santiago Negron.
Thank you. Following Kristen will be Michelle Diebler.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Balgobin, members of the Board. My name is Kristen Kinsella Brinley. I teach at Deland High School. I reside in New Smyrna Beach. I'm here to continue with this list that's sad. And just so you all know, this list is from July. These are the people who have left since July. I hope that we're going to do something to retain the mother, other members of our teaching staff because this is horrendous. Please hear their names. Marlon Thompson, Patricia Wright, Peta Huddelson, Hannah Anderson, Neroli Figaro, Michelle Bares, Bonnie Black, Deborah Connor, Janet Dastis, Suzanne Dill, Amanda Gallagher, Brian Godfrey, Kathleen Guest, Lakeisha Koznick, Jennifer Lau, Kimberly McFresh, Carmen Miles, Alyssa Nelson, Estilla Nomella, Cynthia Panarello, Charles Peacock, Brittany Powers, Janita Walker, Noel Warda, Shanti Teja, Heather McTenny, Samantha Lee, Marietta Morrett, Wanda Wilks, Rhonda Crumley, Darren Marshall, Suzanne Brown, Marina Centron, Rachel Greenlee, Natasha Harrison, Thelma Hendrickson, Jessica Ingram, Isa Korjic, Jeanette Panzerillo, Lydia Ponce, Donna Roy Rubert, Paula Sharon, Janine Thomas, Robert Fitzgerald, Lynn Tomorelli, Joan Jones, Akiva Boston, Barbara Coxwell, Jasmine Muniz, Alicia Pumar, Ashley Shackelford, Brian Allen, Marlene Allen, Maureen Bailey, Leah Hastings, Elizabeth Kelly, Rochelle Meyer, Dana Robbins, Sky Stanek, Catherine Sterling, Judith Falto, Bonnie Turner, Shonda Brown, Mary Elfridson, Myra Alvalenda, Denise Bloomfield, Emily Cruz, Valerie Garcia, Maria Loyola, Anaya Gutierrez, Deborah Harnett, Melissa Jones, Ashley Lamp, April Machado, Belinda Nice, Yanalise Perez, Margaret Haney, Taylor Holcomb, Shanteria, Eva Gourami, Barbara Jordan McGill, Melissa O'Callaghan, Lisa Parker, Tina Peters, Marie Zorn, Patricia Ward, and Kelly Dupus. And I just want to say, this is in your hands to keep us. We all work hard and love our jobs and don't want to leave, but sometimes we're forced to. So, hopefully that you'll make the right choices and help us retain our positions in, with Volusia County where we would like to stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Following Michelle will be Karen Weinrich.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Balgobin. My name is Michelle Diebler and I am from Port Orange. And I hope you have heard our list that we have spoken to you. These people have a face and a name. They have left for some of many reasons. My message for you tonight, after hearing these names, is to consider why we have lost so many of these hardworking, dedicated teachers such as myself. I would like to send the message to you tonight that you can, you can prevent any more on this list from happening. Please listen to us. Please hear our voices. Please consider the Retention Committee, which I was part of, where we were able to speak to you about some of the reasons why this list keeps continuing even today. We have many teachers that I speak to daily, trying to talk them out of leaving. I've talked to them about why they have wanted to leave. And, you know, being part of the Retention Committee, I hope you will talk to me again and other members of that committee. And I would like to just end by saying, a promise made should be a promise kept. Thank you.
Following Karen Weinrich will be Christopher Weinrich.
Good evening. I'm actually here tonight to talk to you about my son, my youngest son, Jonathan. He is currently studying elementary education at Quetstown University in Pennsylvania. He has been volunteering in my classroom since high school. He has just been certified as a substitute and spent his winter break substituting at my school. This is somebody we want back here in Volusia County. So, what has he seen when he subbed for those two weeks? He has seen a wonderful school, caring teachers, great students. We have a supportive principal and assistant principal. He's seen teams of teachers who work together. He's seen me coach girls on the run. He's seen the tutoring provide, all those extra things. But he does not plan to come back here. Because here's what else he's seen. He's seen faculty and staff hurt by students on a daily basis. He's seen a beginning teacher salary that is very good, but doesn't have the potential to go up. He sees unrealistic expectations for teachers. We cannot complete our duties in our work hours. He's seen constant testing, both state and county level. He was actually a proctor for the FAS test, so he got to see that firsthand. He's seen his mother, me, a veteran teacher with a master's degree, making $6,000 more than his brother in his second year of teaching. He's seen a county that has declared impasse instead of fixing this problem. Why should he stay here? We can't in good conscience tell him to stay here. He will have better working conditions and better pay if he stays in Pennsylvania, but you have the power to fix this and I ask that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Following Christopher Weinrich will be Scott Cleary.
Good evening. I'd like to take this time to reminisce a bit about the fantastic evening that we had on Friday. As we celebrated Von de Morris and our sixty-eight colleagues, all of whom were named Teachers of the Year by their respective schools. Wow, what a night, right? What a celebration of public education. As Dr. Balgobin said Friday, "Great teachers are the foundation of a bright and exciting world for all." She went on to remind us that someone is smarter each and every day because of you. How true that is. Dr. Balgobin also thanked these sixty-nine teachers for being the heroes we need every day by saying, quote, "You perform miracles every day." "One student at a time, one day at a time, you inspire the love of learning in your students. You are superstars in one of the noblest professions that I know." Mrs. Haines, in her remarks, reminded us that investing in our youth is the best investment you can make for the future. Truly inspirational words on an inspirational evening. And those of us who attended the Teacher of the Year banquet last year heard similar inspirational words about those sixty-nine teachers. And the year before that, we heard similar words about those teachers, and the year before that, and the year before that. I've heard similar words each year going back to when I was a Teacher of the Year finalist in 2003. Yet, despite these accolades year after year, the teachers of whom hundreds have been Teachers of the Year, these teachers and the district have contentious negotiations when it comes to our contract. Dr. Balgobin entreated us to know that you are a part of a great family. But what kind of family lodges your profession and tells you how fantastic you are while at the same time being unsupportive of your livelihood when it comes to compensation? And bear in mind, teachers are not expecting top dollar. In fact, the teacher's position in current negotiations doesn't even ask for keeping up with inflation. At a time when the district is holding more reserves than required, the teacher's position is to take a real pay cut. Yet, the district felt compelled to call an impasse? At risk of stating the obvious, this sounds like a dysfunctional family. A functional family would find ways to work together to support our miracle workers. Because the way to support the youth is by supporting those who teach them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, Dr. Balgobin. Wow, there are so many things to say, but tonight, I'm going to focus on faith. The tremendous faith I have in my colleagues, teachers, paras, office specialists, as well as some school administrators. And of course, my professional organization, who's always managed to draw blood from stone. But with so many empty words and mendacious platitudes, I've lost faith that the Board or the district will ever seriously address the salary compression facing experienced teachers. It took me some time to accept this reality, but now I realize my faith is completely lost. And I realize it was the moment the district lowballed the recommendation of the Salary Committee. The declaration of impasse, seeking gray market labor instead of addressing retention, the ascendance of micromanagement, and the comments made by Dr. Balgobin to the Department of Education on January eighteenth have only served as reminders of faith gravely misplaced. This is where I say no more. I have tendered my resignation and my final day will be within a fortnight. I refuse to let my love of teaching die because of you, so I'm choosing to teach elsewhere. But before I go, I want you to hear this. My colleagues are absolutely fantastic. They've carried more water for this district in service of their students than Gunga Din, and they deserve so much more, not just in pay, but in respect. Keep ignoring them at your own peril. They need so much more, and learning walks isn't one of them. Finally, I know my students will miss me and some colleagues will miss me, as I will miss them. For my students, it's my fervent hope that they go forth with the flourishing belief in themselves and in doing so, prove to me I'm not mistaken in mine. Good night.
Thank you. At this time, we're going back to Section Two. Two point zero one, Agenda Changes. Superintendent, are there any agenda changes before the agenda is presented to the Board for approval?
No changes from my end, Madam Chair.
Board members, are there any changes you'd like to make to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the presented agenda?
Motion to approve agenda?
Second.
All right, so Mr. Cologne has made the motion to approve the agenda. Mr. Persis has made a second. Any further discussion? Then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. At this time, we're going to continue on and we're going to hold three point zero one, which are lengthy announcements till later in the agenda. At this time, Dr. Balgobin, it's my understanding we have no administrative appointments or transfers?
Madam Chair, we don't, but I would like to make a brief announcement. As you know, McGinnis Elementary, our principal is going to be working for another organization, very well deserved. We congratulate him on that promotion. So, we have asked, because it's the timing of the year in which we're in, and we know how sensitive this time is, we have asked one of our, internally, one of our directors to assume that position, which is Mr. Thomas Vaughn, who is in Student Services, to assume the position of interim. And he, he is, actually, today was his first day at McGinnis. Very gracious for accepting to do this for the community, the school, and the staff members and their students. So, that's just, I just wanted to announce that. It's...
Thank you. And I'm assuming Mr. Vaughn is not here?
He's not here.
I heard.
I know. He had an early schedule this morning.
Good choice, though.
Well, if he's listening or hears this, we want to say thank you for him stepping up to be the principal of McGinnis Elementary for the remainder of the school year. We've already completed Section Five, so we're moving on now to Section Seven point zero one, Removal of Items from the Consent Agenda. Dr. Balgobin, are there any items requiring removal on the consent agenda?
None from my end, Madam Chair.
Board members, are there any items on the consent agenda that you would... Board members, are there any items on the consent agenda that you would like to remove for further discussion? All right, hearing none. Since there are no changes, I'd like to call for a motion of the consent agenda.
We shall approve.
Mrs. Burnett has made a motion. I need a second.
I'll second that.
Ms. Thompson has made the second. Is there any discussion? All right, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda passes unanimously.
The first. That's a first.
I know. That's pretty good. We've already done the public input piece, so we're moving on to Item 17.01, Human Resources Update.
Madam Chair, I would like to ask Mr. West, our Chief of Human Resources, along with Ms. Stephanie Workman, Director for Human Resources, to share with us an update tonight and answer any questions that you may have.
First of all, I want to say thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to come before you and provide an HR update for you this evening. We have a few things that we're going to share with you. We'll start off with our vacancy list as we have before.
Okay, currently, as of end of day on Friday, we are sitting with a total of 157 instructional vacancies, 39 of those in the core, 53 ESC, 17 intermediate, nine non-core, 10 primary, and 29 support. That is down a little bit from December. For support, we are sitting at 246, which is up. We've seen an increase in the paraprofessionals as well as in the Schoolway Cafe. Our leave of absence as of that same date last Friday, we are sitting at 155.
So before I go into the next slide, I kind of want to give a little perspective, and I definitely appreciate the acknowledgement of the teachers that have been with us, and many of those have retired that have been announced tonight. Just to kind of give a little perspective, over the last three years, looking at the separation data from the timeframe between July and December, okay? At the end of the 2021 fiscal year, which of course would be in December, there were 410 separations. End of the last year, which is the '22 school year, was 437, and then this year, 378. So we actually have about 70 fewer separations than we did last year at the same time of year. So I do recognize we always have a retention issue, and we definitely recognize the problems that we want to make sure we're working on to help with that. But what we want to do is also look, of course, at our recruitment piece as well. And thanks to you all bringing forward some really good ideas in regards to recruitment, I'm excited to be able to bring you the International Teacher Program update. We actually have been talking to two different companies, TPG and EPI. Those are acronyms that we'll be bringing forward some contracts with both of those companies. We're having our legal review that to make sure it's within our guidelines of board policy and, of course, statute. And TPG is going to provide between 10 and 20 teachers, and EPI will be providing between 20 and 25 teachers. So we're excited about the opportunity to, you know, that's a cultural exchange program, and we've worked through a lot of exciting things of what we're going to be able to offer our students with these new teachers that are going to be coming in from outside the country to be able to provide to us, and a lot of support that we're going to be able to provide them as well. We've talked to a lot of our neighboring districts and how they're actually doing this, since they have done this in the past. So we'll be bringing, as I said, the action item to you on the February 14th board meeting, okay? I also want to give you a quick update on the senior interns. We have 63 senior interns for the spring semester, so that's pretty exciting with that many that are going to be coming in. We actually had an intern introductory meeting that Dr. Balgobin was able to attend and get the troops really excited. We had 41 of them that showed up last week. And of the 63 that we have total, they represent 16 different colleges and universities. So we have really gone out and done a lot of recruiting in those colleges and universities in local areas. Seven of those 63 are already going to be serving as CETA's, so it's got its own name. And now that we've done it a whole semester, it's that program where we're actually paying our interns to be in the classroom. And so we have seven that are going to be acting this upcoming spring, and we already have nine of those who actually finished up in the fall that are employed as classroom teachers that started on January 2nd when we came back. So we're really excited about where we're headed. Of course, we have our, we have our hiring fair list coming up in April, and we're starting to plan for that. And then the last piece of news that I'm very excited to be able to share with you all, and we'll share it publicly, is that we're excited to be able to announce that we've reached a tentative agreement with our ASME bargaining unit. And we met six times, worked together with that group, and we're excited to be able to reach an agreement actually today. I'd definitely like to acknowledge, first of all, our district bargaining team that was basically led by our chief negotiator, Stephanie Workman, and also the ASME bargaining team that was led by Ms. Kathy Knowles. Kathy, would you please stand up and be recognized? We appreciate you. Thank you. I'm very excited. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
I have a question on a different topic, insurance.
Yes, sir.
So it's my understanding that we went out for RFP, and we only had one company come back with a plan. And I look forward to, and ask for consensus because if there are lots of insur... So our insurance is not affordable for our employees. And part of it is the thing that's great about it, which is the, you know, low-cost clinic visits and low-cost meds. The problem is everybody's paying for it, and the premiums are so high that no insurance we put out for RFP and no insurance company, except for the one that every year has raised the rates, is the one that came back. So either we're asking for the wrong thing, or they're truly the only ones in it to make, you know, provided we continue to go up. So I sent an email, and I would ask if we have consensus to have Brown and Brown come while we still have time to understand why is it that with all of the insurance companies in the whole wide world that provide health insurance, we only had one company? And what is, what are we asking for that is costing so much that it's making a family plan cost $1,300 a month or something crazy like that? And so it's not so much a question to you all as much as it is a consensus item that I'd like to see Brown and Brown come and explain to us because I realize that the insurance committee is the one that makes the recommendation. However, the ultimate decision sits with the board, and I think we have a healthcare insurance problem which is not helping our retention issue. When you can, when you make too much money to get on affordable healthcare, or the ACA or Obamacare, however you want to call it, and you don't make enough, and you don't make enough to pay for health insurance for your family, that's a problem, especially if you're working full-time. And so if we have consensus, I would ask if we can bring Brown and Brown to explain to us what it is that we're asking for that is making us not be competitive in the market where other people would want to provide the service. Because, you know, every year for four years, we always have this conversation when it's too late. And I think we are at a time when, you know, maybe we need to change what we're asking for. And for those who I've had the conversation with, this is year number five. And so I think it's something that we need to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne. Mr. Persis?
I thank you, Madam Chair. Well, number one, I'm not prepared to give you that vote tonight because I did not know we were going to talk about this at all. Number two, we have an insurance committee.
That's correct.
Number three, didn't we already hear of Brown and Brown? Did I read an email from Brown and Brown in analysis or not? Was that person not from Brown and Brown or...
Yes. You want me to address it? Okay.
I'm just not sure if I'm wrong.
No, just, you are correct. You are correct. So after some questions were asked, when the, after the solidarity report went out this past week that announced that we no longer were out for RFP for medical because we only had one applicant, there were some questions that were asked concerning that process. So what I asked Brown and Brown to do was basically give us some bulleted reasons as to why other carriers weren't looking to make a bid, basically. And one of the things that we're required to do as part of the RFP process is we have to provide data. We have to give them our loss ratio, loss ratio history. We have to also provide the number of members that are covered and so forth. So they're allowed to see basically what we have and see if it's something that they can compete with. So one of the things that is considered high that we have is a 90% loss ratio historically. Most insurance companies want to see something in the 80s, preferably the low 80s. Secondly, because Florida Healthcare does employ their own set of doctors, one of the concerns that many other carriers have is being able to come in and get a group of people who have been with the same doctors year after year after year after year to have to change. We saw some of that happen when we switched from Delta Dental over to Solstice. Many dentists do not take Solstice, so people who had been established with dentists had to go and find new dentists. So the other piece, too, is that, you know, Florida Healthcare is a regional, they're pretty much regional, they're Florida. Many of these other companies are national, and they know that it is very difficult to compete on a regional level when someone has a monopoly, and that's pretty much where we are. One of the other things I want to add is that through the insurance committee this past year, we were able to go back to a free plan, which was something we had not offered in the last couple of years. So Florida Healthcare has been working with us, and what we were also able to find out from Brown and Brown through conversation is that many of these national carriers cannot guarantee that we will only have a single-digit rate increase from year to year. And even with Florida Healthcare, we're still below 10% in rate increases. So most of our nationals are anywhere from 12% to 14% yearly. They want to increase. So there are a lot of reasons that when you put all that out there, when these companies look at it, they're like, "We're not going to touch that," because they can't compete with what our local Florida Healthcare can offer. But we're happy to talk with Brown and Brown. I can have a conversation with Jessica Scott, who is our broker, and if you all decide that, we will definitely get something set up.
Well, my, you know, again, I didn't know we were going to talk about this. I did read that email. I think she, that's going out to all of us, right? That analysis from Brown and Brown. So when I read that analysis, I just thought, "Well, that makes sense. I mean, I sort of get it now." But if, I mean, if you're going to go to Brown and Brown, I think the insurance committee ought to be involved in that conversation.
Well, Brown and Brown does attend our insurance committee meetings, and they are part of the process.
Okay.
They are our broker, so that's who we work with.
That's what I'm saying. But I mean, weren't there individuals from the different unions on that committee?
Yes, we have the insurance committee. We actually meet again next Thursday.
Okay.
So we can have this conversation there as well.
That's right. I just don't want to leave them out.
No, absolutely not.
I mean, they've been put in, they're put in so much time, so much work. If, I mean, they need to hear whatever the latest comments might be, you know.
Just so you know, the insurance committee was aware. I mean, this, we met with them on January 5th and had the full conversation after all the RFPs have been reviewed.
Yep.
And it was narrowed down to how many we had for each of the individual coverages. There were two coverages that we did not receive anything outside of our current carriers.
Yeah. I appreciate it. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Persis. Mrs. Burnett?
Thank you. I hear you, and I agree with both of you, but I think that if we have time, we definitely need to have Brown and Brown come and give us an overview of what's going on, and as many people as possible can hear it, and definitely need to have the insurance committee here and hear what they have to say. And let's hear what the options are. I mean, if there's something else we can do and we have time to do it, I think we owe it to everybody to do so. So that's my, and it's not, we're not voting on that, we're just asking for someone to come and make a presentation and do the best that we can for everyone.
And I will say, on behalf of the insurance committee, they are wanting the exact same things that you're asking for. This is, you know, we're all in agreement as to what we would like to see happen. Unfortunately, we don't have all the control as to what insurance companies can and cannot offer. So that's the big piece, and that's where we're asking, Brown and Brown is our new broker, to be that voice for us. So I will work with Mr. West and Dr. Balgobin, and we'll get that set up.
Thank you.
Mr. Cologne?
Question. So when we put out an RFP and we say what we want, that people bid based on what we're asking for, correct?
They do, but there are certain criterias that the RFP process requires us to have available for them to review, and many times, they will just look at that piece and they'll say, "We don't want to, you know, we don't want to go forth with this."
My guess is that what we're asking for is what's drawing people away. And so, again, I'd like to have that conversation with Brown and Brown because, you know, the insurance committee had one insurance company to choose from. And every year, we hear this, and mind you, I've done the math, 75% of the insurance committee is the, our labor folks, our staff, our unions. And so, though we take the blame every single year for the rate increase because we're picking from one company.
Well, you have to understand, we only go out to RFP as needed. So this is the first time since I've been involved that we went out for medical. But we also opened up all other coverage areas, and with the exception of life, every other coverage area had multiple, like in some cases, six to 10 choices.
My point.
So I can get you a copy of the RFP if you would like to see it. I mean, that's a public document.
Like I said, I just think that, you know, that's very limiting in itself, and I think that, you know, if the insurance committee, and we go through this, this is year number five, you know, where, well, we picked what, this is exactly what I hear every year, we picked from the options we were given, and we were not given another option. And so what else could we pick between having no healthcare and having some healthcare? So again, I find it very difficult that we had multiple offers for all those other ones and not enough. And don't get me wrong, some of it is going to be uncomfortable. I don't know anywhere where you can go to the doctor for $8 anymore. I don't know anywhere where you can see a specialist for minimal. I don't know anywhere. And so I think that that is what is causing the inflation so that the people who are using the insurance or want to insure their family can't afford to do it because our ratio is so high. And so, you know, if you ask for something great, you're going to pay more for it, to the point where we've priced ourselves out of the market where nobody wants to even, it's not even, it's not even an RFP. If you don't have anybody who's willing to chime in and you're not real, it's not realistic, and it's not really an RFP, and there's a lot of insurance companies out there. So I'd be, like I said, I just want to be able to know whether it, you know, it's like a bad relationship, is it me or is it you? I want to ask Brown and Brown, is it you or is it us? You know, are we unrealistic?
Well, and just so, for the record, this is our first year with Brown and Brown. Prior to then, we had Aon, so we were hoping that in that switch, we would see some changes.
If they did their homework and watched every school board meeting, whenever we talked about insurance, we'd talk about, "This is Groundhog Day, year number five." Except we have, we're at an RFP stage, and we have probably a whole whopping month and a half before we get the, "It's too late, we can't change, we can't do this, we can't do that," because, you know, October 1st is right around the corner.
But one thing I do want to also add is that when we were setting up the timeline for all of this, we did it well in advance so that we do not get to May, June, July, which is what we have seen in years past. But one thing I do want to also add is that when we were setting up the timeline for all of this, we did it well in advance so that we do not get to May, June, July, which is what we have seen in years past. We were ready to, we were, are going to be ready to bring these to you starting at the end of March. So we've got that-
You all have done a phenomenal job.
We've built a buffer in for that piece.
You've done a phenomenal job. I just think that what we're asking for, from a traditional sense of just the way we've always done it, is what's pricing us out of the market.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll work with everyone and get that set up for you guys.
Mrs. Burnett? Thank you. To Mr. Cologne's point, I was just going to say, is there a, a way we can ask some of the insurance committee, I know they've probably already been asked once, but ask again, is there something else that we can look for in that RFP to maybe open those doors up a little bit and we can have that and they can be prepared when they come meet with us?
We can. And, and really what I would recommend is either have Maria Kraft or Lynn Stockman answer those questions because they are the ones that help us draft that RFP based on what the committee has said they want to see.
Thanks.
Mr. Persis?
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, it's not what we're asking for. We're just the board. We're not asking for any, we don't make this up. It's the insurance committee. It's what the teachers and the staff and the people that are employees, it's what they want. They make up the insurance committee. They make up the RFP. They put the criteria in there that, that drives it. And it's not what the school board is saying, that we want this amount of coverage or that amount of coverage. Am I, am I correct or am I wrong?
You, you're, you're correct in that part. However, the school board does make the determination as to what the board contribution is.
Oh, the board contribution.
Which plays into this as well.
Clearly, the board contribution is up to us. I mean, that is clearly up to us. But if I'm talking about what is in the R, the RFP, that kind of coverage-
That comes from the insurance committee.
That is truly from the insurance committee and it isn't from the board. Correct?
Correct, because you all aren't sitting on that committee.
What the coverage is, we never get involved in the-
No, no.
Coverages.
Not to my knowledge, no.
Not since I've been here. We don't get asked, what kind of coverage do you want on your health insurance? No. That comes from the insurance committee. The board decides how much they want to pay put into it, but that's about it. The other thing I just want to say is, to me, I mean, we can go through this exercise, but if we've already hired, you know, Brown, Brown and Brown, and I think they're about as expert in this industry as any company, and we just happen to have them locally, which is like amazing. You know, it might be good for to hear it, but I don't think it's going to change anything. So just want to get that out there. I appreciate Brown and Brown weighing in and giving us that analysis that they did. It seemed like, seemed to me it was right on point. I mean, you want to know why? There was only one. Here's why. And they, and they spelled it out. I mean, I can read, so I don't, you know, I don't know how, how it's going to change anything. Only thing that could change anything would be if this board decides that they want to pay more for every employee's health insurance. If you want to pay more for every employee's health, health insurance, then their, then their personal obligation would go down. But I don't think this board is going to come up with anything that's going to trigger different health insurance rates from any other company.
All right. I'd like to weigh in on this. So I lived through the time period where we had lots of other choices for insurance. And what I will say is, you know, even during that time period, I typically, depending on which doctor's office I personally went to, or I took my children at the time to, I made a $20 or $25 copay. So how we ended up with totally Florida healthcare, basically owning this, and I've said this out loud. I mean, I at first had a lot of frustration with our previous broker because I didn't feel like they were working for us. I felt like they were working for Florida healthcare. And I said that out loud in several meetings because they would come and do an individual meeting with each of us and say, oh, we've brought you the best deal. And I would say, no, that's not acceptable. And then they would come back two weeks later and go, oh, this is the best deal. So how do you trust someone when they try to tell you this is the best deal and then they come back two weeks later with, no, now this is the best deal? I really feel as if we're in a situation where we need to have some real honest conversation. And we need to look at who's using the insurance and how is it being used. I know that I've also heard at times from our retirees, because we are under the Florida healthcare piece, that when they travel outside of the state, Florida healthcare is not there for them. Okay? And that's a problem because we have people that have retired that have chosen to live outside the state. And if they're not yet old enough to draw Medicare, then they've got an issue. They're paying prices for an insurance that they really only have service inside of Florida. I personally would like everybody to come back to the table. I'd like to hear from the insurance company, but I think there has to be some give and take. I think, you know, we may have to say, we've got to go to a $20 deductible instead of an eight. Because I'm not sure who's even, who all is using the $8 deductible piece. I mean, and if 25 years ago, I was paying a $20 deductible, a $20 deductible is still fine, in my opinion. All right? And the part about, okay, the one thing on the Brown and Brown, and I, I appreciate the lady taking all that time to spell out, you know, stating why she felt no one else put in for the medical piece. The part about the doctors, I'm not totally buying it. Okay? Because there are doctors here that are taking multiple insurances. They're taking the Florida healthcare and they're, because Florida healthcare is not totally just into their own doctors. There are local doctors that also take Florida healthcare, but also take United and take, you know, Blue Cross and Blue Shield and all of these others. So I don't think everybody would totally lose their doctors and have to change by us walking away from Florida healthcare. What this says to me, earlier today, I was in a conversation where I asked a person, nothing to do with insurance, another topic, but I asked the person, why are we doing this if the rules and regulations or codes say we only have to do this? Well, you only have to do this maybe for this group or this area, but for over in this area, you need to do this. So we just decided we would always do this because it's easier on us. So I feel like we're in a situation where we keep coming back here because, well, this is just the easiest thing to do, but is it what's best? Now, I, I don't know that even if we go down this path and we bring everybody back and say, so what can we live with and what can we do without to make this work better for everybody? I don't think we'll ever make everyone 100% happy. They're, because 100% happy would be, hey, I don't have to pay anything and I have full insurance and I can see whatever doctor I want and I can take whatever prescription medicine they give me or have a surgery. But that's not the United States. Okay? That's not where we live and the costs have been going up on everything. Now, back to Mr. Persis's point. Mr. Persis, unless you're in different meetings than I am, and I, I have great respect for you. Every time we meet with finance, we don't get to say, hey, I want you to find more money so that we can pay more money for the insurance premiums. Because I ask all the time, is there any more money? And so, I mean, it's, there's only set amount of money and it's which pot do you put it in? So if, if the insurance company feels more money needs to go into the insurance pot, then it's got to come from another pot. So what other pot is it coming from? I mean, we, I mean, because look, if we had the ability to just say, hey, we want to put this much in there and we don't care where the money's coming from, that'd be nice. But it, it's not that easy either. So I personally would like a workshop on this because we can't get out of this hole. We've been in this hole. We've asked to get out of the hole. We've been clear about getting out of the hole. We changed our broker, I think, hoping we could get out of the hole. But I think the only way we're going to get out of the hole is we have to say, what is the most important thing that we want in insurance? And where can we give? And I think really, each individual has to evaluate themselves and how do you use your insurance? And what part of your insurance do you use? Do you ever meet your deductible? Do you not? Are you willing to, you know, would you rather have the money in your pocket and put a little away like you do for a house repair for in the event you're in an accident and you may have a little bit bigger deductible? Or do you say, no, I want that no-cost insurance and, you know, I won't pay above an $8, you know, office visit? Or no, I'm willing to pay $20 for an office visit or 25 because I get a little bit more in my pocket? I mean, that's what it comes down to. And every individual knows their own health needs and what they need, but I am just tired. I feel like we can't make any progress. And, and I said this to Florida healthcare at one point on the phone. I feel like they are bullying us, you know, and have us in a situation where we can't get out. And so I personally would like to know on what other areas you sent out RFPs for, how, who you got. Because it appears that in medical, that's the only area we got Florida healthcare, right?
I can't answer that right now because we're still under the cone of silence because we're still going through the RFP process. I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine. And I appreciate that and I respect that. Thank you for answering that. But can we have a workshop on this, Dr. Baugman?
Absolutely. Mr. West, can you make a notation?
We'll have the insurance committee there as well.
Please. Please have them here. All right. Anything else on this topic? Thank you very much. All right, we're moving right along to the board action items. Item 18.01, this is the acceptance of the internal accounts audited financial statement. Dr. Baugman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you can see, we already have here with us Mr. Todd Sees, our CFO. I would also like to invite Mr. Joel Knopf. Is he here?
That's for the next agenda item. This is for the internal audit finding.
All right. So go ahead, lead it, Mr. Sees.
Yeah. Good evening, Board and Superintendent. The staff has requested approval of the school internal accounts audit for the fiscal year that just ended, June 30th, 2022. As shared with you in the email back on January 12, the results of the internal audit were included for your review. And there was also a summary of attachment, really the most common find, findings that we had here, reported from our schools. We had support for receipts, timeliness of deposits, timeliness of collection, approval purchases, and support for tickets. Those were some of the main items that we see reoccurring in our schools. Most of the internal account findings related to the top three, though. So I guess my, my approach right away from a CFO perspective, you know, I'm just entering here, is like, how are we going to mitigate this going forward? And I think we have a good solution here. So we feel really through the introduction of the new accounting software program that we're going to be implementing for school internal funds. It will help alleviate some of these audit findings that we're seeing at some of our schools. The new, really the new software should actually streamline how the bookkeepers are processing the information and improve the workflow process. Right now, there's a lot of manual stuff that the school bookkeepers are having to do. We're actually found a software solution that was board approved tonight that will actually be able to take four programs that the bookkeepers have to go into and combine it into one now that they can use to do all those functions. So we're trying to streamline that and help the bookkeepers out as well as the principals. So that's really the goal here. I'm hoping that we can mitigate this in future years. The plan is to have this new software program put in place for July 1st and then we'll work with those bookkeepers and the principals to train them. And then hopefully, it will help them in identifying and properly, you know, making sure that the receipts are in the system and timeliness of deposit. And really, that's really what I wanted to say here on this item. There is room for improvement and I'm ready to tackle that. And I think we can do that with a new software solution. So. Any questions?
Mr. Persis?
I just think it's great that, you know, that you're new and you came up quickly with the, with that solution. And because as, as a principal, the same items come up here, the money's collected for, not getting the money to the bookkeeper by the end of the day, not, not putting the receipt number that matches on the form. I mean, it's the same things that just happened. And, and as you know, some schools have had the same bookkeeper and they got their act together. Some bookkeepers don't stay very long and so new, new people come in and it's a difficult job. It's a very difficult job. And so it takes a while to get the swing of it. And you have so many teachers and everyone's doing different things and, and they're supposed to get it down there before the 3, 3:30 and you may have just left and the teacher comes down and you're not there. So the teacher takes it back and lo and behold, you get caught on that with some audit. And, and it's just, so just to hear, to hear you say, there's a software pro, program that could help bookkeepers keep track of all, of all these things, as well as help teachers and the principal, of course, I think it's just, it'll be awesome. So I'll be curious to see one year from now, you know, how this has helped. So I just wanted to say thank you to you.
Mr. Cologne?
And so I guess tonight we'll call it Groundhog Day. Because every year we go through and we get the audits and they tell us our bookkeepers have opportunities. And I'm probably a little bit least optimistic about the new software, although I think it is necessary.
Come on, be positive.
Because, no, there's a part of, and what I've noticed in my short time here is, you know, we're in the people business. And what I find is you have a great bookkeeper who wants to do a great job, but is pulled in 50 directions because everybody wants her to do it a certain way, whether it's right or wrong. And so I, I think that we have an opportunity with maybe some centralization of process so that they do have the ability to say, this is not the right way to do it without getting slammed by their leader because they're standing up for the way it's supposed to be done. In the same fashion, I think there's some room for standardization as it relates to education and support. You know, as, as you mentioned, Mr. Persis, a lot of new folks come in, they switch, they get promoted. And so they probably get this big book that says, this is how you do it. And the, the practical aspects of it are not the same as, as what they're, what they live in their schools. And so maybe some centralization around the training of that. Because the reality is that when that audit report comes out, even though it's from their individual school, that's a reflection on you and your department and the work that you do. So I am supportive of the software, but I think there's a lot more to be done there as it relates to education and maybe even some centralization so that they feel empowered to say, this is not the right way to do it. And, and I feel like I'm breaking the wall arguably. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Yes. Are any other districts using this program currently?
The, yes, there are. I want to say it's Atchua County. I'm trying to remember the ones off the top of my head. Sorry. I know, I've been fighting this. So, and I think there's two other ones. I just don't recall off the top of my head. Correct. But we currently use Focus. And that's the one we're going, proposing. And that was board approved tonight. And Focus is our student system. So this should plug right into our student system. And that's what we're hoping to achieve. We also use Focus for our property records tracking. So we're hoping that it will all work together nicely so the bookkeepers don't have to log into another system. You know, they're, they're using just one system to accomplish many tasks.
Okay. Because to kind of piggyback on what Ruben said, I was going through the audits and it just seemed like there was a lot of human error, like things like, there were no signed commitments for purchases and such. So I just don't see how a software program, and I would love to be proved wrong, can like help out with that.
Yeah, we, one of the-
Yeah, we, one of the things, too, is that we do manual receipts here. So, this will eliminate manual receipts, and it will keep track of that. So, if the teacher is collecting funds, they'll be able to record it right away and put that in the system. So, we'll know that that's hanging out there. Right now, we do not know. So, that goes back to the bookkeeper, and, and the bookkeeper has, and it could go late to the bookkeeper. She doesn't even know that's actually out there. She would be able to run a report to show what receipts were issued by the teachers for that day. So, we're hoping some of this, these processes and workflow, really the workflow, what I'm talking about, too, is for the principal. When we issue a purchase order in the system, it will go through a workflow instead of a piece of paper printed out and going to the principal and having to sign it. They should just be able to use their, their smartphone and just approve if they agree with that purchase. So, that's really where we're trying to go with this, correct?
All right, thank you.
Mrs. Burnett?
Thank you. I'm going to try to be on the positive side and, and hope that this works. But since it's a program, is there a, is there a long contract or is there a short contract so that we're not, we're not held bound by something if, if it's not working?
The, excuse me. The, the contract, I think, let me look back here real quick. I have it here. It was board-approved. It was on one of our agenda items. Yeah, yeah, Dawn, Ms. Fortez, could you come up here for a sec, please? Ms. Fortez is actually our Director of Finance. We didn't know. How long the contract is for, for this?
I believe it's.
It's an annual basis? Okay, thanks.
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I believe it's on an annual basis.
Annual, okay, all right. Thank you. I'm sorry if I put you on the spot. I was just wondering if we were going to be held to, you know, something long-term or if we would be able to try something else, I guess. But, anyway, thank you.
Okay, I am going to go positive for a moment because if you look at all the schools, and I do look at them and I read, you know, and a lot of it is true, it's human error or, as I told a story last year, it may be the bookkeeper only collects it one time a day, and it doesn't work for everyone. Here's the good thing, thirty-four schools didn't have a single finding. I mean, that's, they, they need to be congratulated. I mean, thirty-four schools passed with flying colors. And even when you look at the things, I mean, there's a few out there that it's like, we may need to see if they have a new bookkeeper or need some extra training or support. But I think that's a positive thing because they did the work and they did it right. And, and it's not, it's not, they're not all elementary, they're not all middle, and they're not all high. And, you know, just remind yourself that if you're dealing with an elementary school that has six hundred students that you're collecting limited funds from, we've got high schools like Deland High, who's the largest with over three thousand kids, that I guarantee you every day they're collecting money for something and having to figure it out and get it right. And so, I appreciate all of you that passed with no findings.
That's awesome.
Dr. Bagman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to add to, just to remind the board that last year, we were noticing the same, the pattern, same findings over and over again. And one of the practices that was instituted here in Volusia County, starting last year, and this is the second year that we're doing, and we will continue to do these, are the internal audits that are done within the county. So, we've got members from different departments that visit schools, and they go and they conduct it almost similar to this, these audits that are being done, look for some of the same findings. So that if we see a, a pattern or a trend that's occurring in our schools, we can go ahead and come up with, with a solution. Our principals are involved in that. As a matter of fact, our principals sign off on the action plan that will be implemented. It's sent to all of the assistant superintendents for those divisions, along with the deputy superintendent. So, and I think it's, 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 it's a combination of efforts, right? But I think I've seen, I have personally seen a dramatic decrease in some of the same findings, but going back to this particular software, because we use Focus. This program, from what I understand and what's been, been shared with me, is that it, it integrates, it's integrated, it works well, it's, it, with our Focus software, so that it will eliminate some of the steps that have been conducted manually by our bookkeepers at schools.
All right. Any further discussion? Then, Dr. Bagman, is there a recommendation?
Yes, Madam Chair. I recommend acknowledgement of the submission of the Volusia County Schools Internal Funds Audited Financial Statements for the fiscal year ended in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Move approval of item eighteen zero one.
Zero two. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Persis. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. So, Ms. Thompson has seconded it. Any further discussion? Do we have, I, I did, I looked through the comment cards and I did not see any comments on this item before we vote. All right, thank you. Then, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. We're moving on to item eighteen. No, that was, okay, that was eighteen.
Point zero two.
Huh? That was one. We're moving on to eighteen point zero two.
Correct. And this is the acceptance of our audited financial comprehensive report for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Mr. Sees is already here, our Chief Financial Officer, also Mr. Joel Knopf from Shareholder MSL. He's a CPA and advisors. And Ms. Fortez, please continue to join them.
Great, well, good evening, Madam Chair, Board members. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Joel Knopf, shareholder with MSL, and we had the privilege of working with the district this past year, looking at the financial statements for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. We had some required communications to make as part of the audit, and, you know, one of those items is just pointing out to the board if there were any significant difficulties or findings that we encountered as we completed the audit. And I'm pleased to report we got full cooperation from staff, and the audit ran very smoothly. Another key item is whether there's audit adjustments that are identified in the audit, which would indicate that the numbers that the district prepared and provided to us weren't materially correct, and we had to correct them for presentation in the financial statements. I'm also pleased to report there were no audit adjustments. So, Dawn, in particular, did a great job with her team in making sure that the, the processes the district uses to ensure accurate financial reporting were followed and that we got correct numbers to conduct our audit. I would also point out there was one new accounting standard that was implemented for the fiscal year twenty-two that related to operating leases in particular. So, you'll find some disclosures that are in addition to what was presented in prior years related to that implementation, but it really didn't have a significant impact on the district's financials, other than adding an asset and a corresponding liability for the, the right to use facilities or equipment throughout the district with the corresponding lease commitment or financial obligation to pay for those items over the course of the lease term. We also received representations at the conclusion of our audit that management provided us with all the information we requested. So, that was also a critical piece of, of the audit. Beyond that, I did want to point you to the document itself. It's a hundred fifty-five page document, so a lot of information in there. I did want to point you to the table of contents in particular as it divides it into the various sections. There's actually four sections of the report. An introductory section, which I do want to highlight there, that the district did receive two certificates of achievement for excellence in financial reporting that related to fiscal year twenty-one. So, congratulations to the finance team and the district for that. Those awards come from the Government Finance Officers Association, as well as ASVO. Following that section is the financial section, which is really the key component of what we're reporting on in the financial statements. You'll find our audit report on page one. It's a three-page letter this year, but it is, you'll find our opinion in the very first paragraph, which was an unmodified opinion, which means it's a clean opinion that the numbers are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles for governments, and they're materially correct. Following that are various statements. If you start at the back of the document, you'll find more detail, and as you move forward towards the front, that those numbers get rolled up together into more summarized statements. At the very front, the statement of net position and statement of activities are full accrual statements, meaning the long-term assets, capital assets of the district, as well as long-term liabilities, which primarily include pension obligations, all the long-term bond issues, as well as other post-employment benefits. So, those are all part of those statements and give you kind of an overall, you know, big picture view of the district. Beyond that is the fund-level statements, which, you know, the general fund's really the key one there that, you know, governs kind of the operations of the district and, you know, where the discretionary dollars are spent. And then you have special revenue funds and capital project funds that track various activities of the district, but the funding is, you know, restricted in how that can be spent. The back section, following those, that financial section, you'll find the statistical section, which gives ten-year trend data. I think it's a very helpful synopsis to review, just to see how the district's performed over the past ten years. And it, there's a lot of different components to that. You'll see financial trends as far as just summarized financial data. You'll see the revenue capacity, debt capacity, and then various operating tables as well. So, I think it's a helpful tool to consider. And then beyond that's the single audit section, which is the focus on the federal awards that the district received. And we have several reports in that section as well that I'll point you to. Page one hundred forty-nine is what we call the Yellow Book Report. It's the report related to government audit standards, and if there's internal control deficiencies or non-compliance issues noted in our audit, we would report those in that report, but that's a clean report as well. And then beyond that is the report specific to the federal grants, and the district received significant federal grants for fiscal year twenty-two. You know, continued COVID stimulus funding, and that totaled almost a hundred forty-five million for fiscal year twenty-two. So, a big piece of our audit was looking at that for compliance, and pleased to report that that was a clean report as well, no findings identified. And then beyond that, there were two separate reports we issued related to auditor general compliance, one on investment compliance at the district level, and then a second is the management letter that the auditor general requires. We did have one management letter comment that related to the district improving really the communication process between departments. That's part of their accounts payable accrual at the end of the year, but we didn't consider that significant as it relates to its impact on the financial statements. But beyond that, I think those were really the key remarks I wanted to share, the, the district's financial position and fund balance you can view within the financial statements. It was a, a steady year, no, no deterioration in financial position, and, and the fund balance levels continued to meet the required thresholds, so no concerns to note there. So, beyond that, any questions? I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions?
I had, I had a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Persis.
Gosh, there's not a page number. Well, I'll just pick a page in this. Let's see, I'm in the statistical section, and just one thing kind of caught my eye, and I'm sure there's, I was, okay, and then you go past where it says, this page intentionally left blank.
Okay.
Right? And now, if we're on the same.
You can look at the header.
Okay, so the header says, District School Board, Volusia County, Changes in Fund Balances, Government Funds, Last Ten Years Modified.
It says it's page one oh nine.
Basis, that's either one of them.
Oh, it does have a page number. Well, why didn't you tell me that earlier?
Well, I was waiting to see which page you were looking for.
I'm sorry. My fault, my bad. Okay, see where it says, local sources at the bottom?
Yes.
Okay, and then you go over to two thousand twenty-two. And then, so I'm looking at ad, ad valorem taxes and local sales taxes.
Yes.
And so, when it's local sales taxes, is that our half-cent sales tax revenue? So, I just thought, for the board's information, I thought, it's pretty interesting to see how that number has gone up from how much revenue we are bringing in from that half-cent sales tax. And when you think of it, that, what, at least thirty, thirty-five percent is being paid for by people that don't live here. And then, the thing that caught my eye was the, the interest had parentheses around. So, how do you, how do we have a negative interest? I mean, do we?
It is a.
In somebody for that or what?
Right, it is a, a net investment income amount, so it factors in the change in, in market value for the district's investments. So, unfortunately, the market had a bit of a downturn by the end of the fiscal year. And so, looking at the market value of the holdings.
So, that was money that we had in stocks, or let's say, in stocks, and the, and the market went down.
Right, so it's really unrealized losses.
Okay, well, okay, I see what you're saying. So, it's not like, it's not like we paid anybody, but it's just that the value of that dropped by, by that amount of money. Is that, am I saying that correctly? Okay, that's it? I just, just wanted to point some of that stuff out. Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry, I didn't know the page. Next time, I'll be a little more careful about that.
That's okay. Are there any other questions? Dr. Bagman, do you have a recommendation?
I do, Madam Chair. I recommend acceptance of the submission of the audited annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
So, you've heard the recommendation of the superintendent. Do I have a motion?
Motion to submit.
Second.
All right, so Mr. Cologne has made the motion, Mr. Persis has seconded. Is there any further discussion? And I don't, I don't have any public input, any further discussion. Then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Now, we're moving on to item eighteen point zero three.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you can see, we still have with us here Mr. Todd Sees, our Chief Financial Officer. And I would also like to ask Mr. Pendley, our General Counsel, if he's here to please join Mr. Sees.
Mr. Sees, will you please present this next board action item?
Including in the, in the agenda for tonight is an action item to approve the four-a-disclosure of business transactions, relationships, or interest that was filed by Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams was a board-appointed to serve on the Audit Committee and has served effectively in that capacity. Ms. Williams likely has a conflict of interest due to her new employment with James Moore, who also did the audit for us for the internal audit, internal school accounts audit that was presented in action item eighteen oh one. The school, the district's schools internal accounts auditor, this, the, sorry, the school board will need to vote to waive the conflict of interest as presented by Ms. Williams for her, sorry, for her, for her to continue to serve on the Audit Committee.
All right. So, the recommendation is that we So the recommendation is that we adopt the proposed amendments to the school... Wait, I'm on the wrong, sorry. All right. The recommendation is that we adopt the, or agree with the disclosure of business transaction relationship when it deals with Mrs. Amy Williams, who currently serves on our internal audit committee, which is a voluntary position. And she is volunteering as a representative for District 2. So we're making the recommendation, not the superintendent, because we control the internal audit committee.
Is that the committee or the chair?
Yes.
Yes, and the, the statute allows the board to waive the conflict of interest by a two-thirds vote. The legislature anticipated that this type of thing could come up with advisory committee members due to their employment, and the statute specifically allows a waiver of the conflict of interest by a two-thirds vote.
So I could have a question?
Yes.
Mr. Wall. So in the event that something came before the committee for a vote that would benefit Ms. Williams or James Moore, she could recuse herself from voting?
That's correct. She would be required to if the vote relates to her special private gain or loss.
Okay, and then that's, that's fine? Yeah, I'm good with that. I mean, I'm just...
So I can actually tell you that because of when the internal audit committee was created, she has recused herself twice before we ever even did this document, because she's very professional and if anything, and, and we, the people that you need on this committee already have a background, that they are familiar with audits and things such as that. Because you're not just going to go out into the community and pick someone that, you know, doesn't have a CPA or an attorney, you know, that has previously done this type of work or been in this situation, because the attention to detail needed to make the best decisions, that's what we need. And everybody on that committee does volunteer for it. And she has already recused. So what we're trying to do is make sure that everything is transparent and that we have the documents signed, so that in the event, and it would be with any of the others, like if any one of them ends up doing part-time work with someone that could possibly complete an RFP process for us, we would need to do the same thing with them.
Sounds good.
Ms. Thompson, do you have any?
Oh, no, I was going to ask the same question Carl had, so I'm good.
Any other questions or discussion? Then we're going to ask for a motion to approve the disclosure of business transaction relationship of interest for Mrs. Amy Williams.
And to waive the conflict of interest.
To waive the conflict of interest.
I'll make the motion.
All right, Mrs. Burnett has made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Cologne has seconded it. Any further discussion? Okay, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving along to item 18.04.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our general counsel is already here, Mr. Pendley, and he will present for us the adoption of School Board Policy 614.
Thank you, Dr. Balgman, Madam Chair, board members. Item 18.04 requests the board's consideration of adoption of Board Policy amended section, Policy 614 concerning your impact fee schedules. As you recall, back in December, the board reviewed the changes that were proposed based on the Bynash Study of 2001. After several workshops, the board elected to move forward with amending, issued a resolution, and that resolution required amending Policy 614 to be in conformance. Those changes have been made in accordance with the board's wishes and properly advertised for the statutory period in a publication of general circulation in Volusia County. It stands ready for adoption. That's the board's pleasure tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Pendley. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
I have a recommendation, Chair. I recommend adoption of the proposed amendments to School Board Policy 614, Education Facilities Impact Fee.
Board members, any discussion? Mr. Gomez, there's been no more cards turned in for this. All right, thank you. All right, then you've heard the recommendation of the superintendent regarding item 18.04, which is our Policy 614. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to approve School Board Policy 614, Educational Facilities Impact Fee.
Do I have a second?
As amended, is that what we're saying? As amended?
No.
There, there's no, been no amendment since the adoption.
It's a brand-new. Gotcha. Correct. Thank you for that. I second. Yes, ma'am.
So Mr. Cologne has made the motion. Mr. Persis has seconded it. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Pendley.
Thank you.
Is everybody good?
We're done.
Okay. We need, we're going to take a, a 10-minute break. We will be back at 7:55, and we'll be moving at that time into item 19.01. Thank you.